Get started. John, can you lead the center of the congregation?
Yeah, our body is praise your holy precious name before it is asking to be with us as we make decisions for the cities. Just let everybody have an open mind, just keep a hedge of passion around our community people with these things. We ask in your holy precious name.
Samantha's gonna lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose majesty is the world.
We're having a way of calling reading order to start with our roll call. Mr. Cottle. Jeff Upton. Dan Grogdon. John Collins.
Here.
Here at Hungate.
Here.
John Rollins.
Here.
Joe Toward.
Here.
Dean McKnight. City Attorney and City Clerk of prison. First item on the agenda is the adoption of our agenda. Are there any changes? Does anyone know that means we may? Nope. Do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
On second.
No motion, a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from September tenth. Do we have any changes that can be made there? Do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum where we allow up to two minutes per speaker. We encourage you to come and address the council with any questions or concerns you may have. Anyone like to address the council? Yes, ma'am, tell us your name.
Jennifer Sims. So, the Small Town Big Lights Planning Meeting is going to be Thursday, October the twenty-fourth at six. And we're gonna meet at City Hall, the Star City, the City Administration Building. So, we'd love to have some input. This is one of the final meetings that we'll have before the parade. And the parade is the first Saturday in December, which will be December the seventh. And the, we'll also talk a little bit about the lights contest. We do have the same sponsors again this year, plus a few others that we're waiting to secure. So, Newland Realty, Bank of Fayetteville, and Harvest Bank have agreed again to sponsor that lights contest. So, everybody needs to get their designs in order, because last year we had a really good turnout on that. And the lights, the entry for the lights contest will be December the sixteenth, and we'll judge it on the seventeenth. So, anybody that has ideas or would like to come to that planning meeting on the twenty-fourth, it is welcome to the public. We appreciate it.
Any questions for Jennifer? Thank you, Jennifer. Would anyone else like to address the council?
I want to add some questions.
Tell us who you are and what's your age.
Paul McCottle.
Yes, ma'am.
I was wanting to know if you had an update on our bridge that's down there in the grass? And also on our memorial. Haven't had anything on it in quite a while.
Two very good questions, Paul. On the bridge, no, no update. It is stacked up down there. It looks like it's gonna be stacked up down there for the foreseeable future. No update there. As far as the memorial, the memorial is something we need to get started on. Chad and I were just talking about that the other day. Can you just, when you and Chad are talking, uh, Chad or I? But yes, that is something we need to get started on, sure, the memorial. We have some donations for that, we have some stuff purchased for that, we just haven't, uh, we just haven't got started. Isaac's guys, they're, they have been rather busy here lately, so it is something we need to get put on the agenda and start on.
Do you have longer plans for the bridge?
As far as the city officially, no, we do not.
Anderson.
I've reached out to a lady that works in the part of the heritage. She's looking for a home. The thing is, it's a small operation, it has negative, certain amount of miles, everything now.
Come up, come up here and tell us who you are, sir.
Steve Winkler, local businessman, investor in West Fork, pot stirrer, that sort of thing. Pro-democracy, that sort of thing. I just wonder if we can get kind of an update on this stuff. You know, there's a category that says old business in the agenda. And it's as though there's never any old business. Apologies, this is old business. I've thought about the bridge, that's old business. And the memorial, that's old business. So, it seems like unless you're taking care of everything at this meeting, then there is, should be some little, you know, something kind of go on. So, where people can understand, here's the thing about democracy, mayor. People are-
Are you here to talk about the bridge and the agenda?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Then keep it to that.
All right, here's the thing about democracy is, for it to happen, people need to be informed about what their government's doing. So, the city government, the more that they keep people informed about what's going on, you'll have a better participation. They have this thing called participatory democracy. So, if you're interested in having people being involved in the city, feeling like it's part of their city, participating in the city, you'll need to keep them informed. Thanks.
Thank you. So, on that note, Steve, while we're on that, this would be a good time to let everyone know that the police chief and I will be participating in a Facebook Live event. It'll probably be November, where we're gonna encourage citizens to ask their questions that they want from the council or the mayor. A lot of people don't come to the meetings, but we're gonna use it as an opportunity for that. And the chief and I are gonna-
Have we decided to do it on Facebook Live or do it a bit differently?
Well, Shannon's still working out the details, so Shannon is gonna be, she's figuring out how that works for me, because I have no idea. And she's a little bit busy. She just had a baby, so I don't know if everyone saw that yet, but, was it the baby heiress? Little girl, eight pounds, twenty inches. So, anyway, Steve, we are looking at some different things for-
You realize Facebook, not every, it's a private account, so not everyone is a member of Facebook.
I don't, because I don't do anything on Facebook.
A town hall meeting would be, where everyone would be welcome.
And I, no, I see what you're saying there. The problem is, we have some town hall meetings, and we have six people show up, and I don't wanna do that. I wanna try to reach a bigger, a bigger group. So, anyway, that's something we're looking at doing. As far as the old business, as far as I'm concerned, the business on the memorial is completed. We've had votes on that, we've appropriated funds to that, we've decided what we're gonna do there. It's not old business anymore, it's closed. Yeah, there's still news, there's still questions about it, but as far as it staying on the agenda for years, it's not gonna happen. But, to your point, yes, and if anyone has questions, we're always available, so. By phone, by email, you know where the office is up on seventy-one, that's a great source of information. Anyway, anyone else?
I'd just like to add that the email is still up for the memorial project, and that anyone is welcome to email that address at any time.
Oh, there you go. Okay, anyone else? All right, so we're gonna close our public forum, and before we jump into business reports, we got a little something special to show you guys. I know everyone's gonna be excited about this, so if you would direct your attention to TV. So, I'm not sure if everyone has heard or not, but Farnington recently had a softball game that featured the police officers versus the fire department. And we just happened to have one of those police officers who participated.
Who was that?
Officer Collins.
Hey, it ain't working, let's move on.
Love you for him, Mayor Cottle caught some footage.
Can I have a show you how to do that?
There we go. I missed the best one. Can we rewind that, chief? We missed, it's a pretty big hit, they gets there tripled.
Who's that running for?
No, that's him. So, if you notice there, he come home, and that was Hunter Carnehan. I don't know if everyone knows Hunter Carnehan or not, but he's about the size of Samantha. And the play before that, John had absolutely just barrel rolled him. And on that one in particular, if you saw Hunter was, ah!
Yeah, he tried to grab it. A new old slide and new bad stock. That's what happens.
That's your make and age, you're limited.
Yeah. They don't pay enough to slide.
Anyway. So, Farnington had a good time with that. Had a great turnout for that. A lot of people there supporting it. And that was all for-
This year was Shop With A Cop, the police department gets all the donations. The fire department hosts it next year, and they give it to their cause. So, I don't know if they chose to give it to them. Yeah, probably new recliner or something.
All right, we'll jump into our business reports. First up, Walter Orange with the planning mission.
Evening. So, last month was pretty productive. We've got our new forms finally in order, and we got them, they're now up on the website, and they look really great. The work our secretary Elizabeth Hale has done has just been immaculate. This upcoming meeting, right now we don't have an agenda yet, so maybe something will come up, but other than that, it looks like it's gonna be pretty slow. Any questions?
So, all those forms are PDF fillable?
Yes, they're all PDF fillable. I pulled them up, they look great, fillable, all that.
Any questions, Walter?
Thank you.
Next is the library report. As I said, Shannon just had her baby, or on the sixth.
Yes, on the sixth. May I?
Absolutely, please.
Betty Kennedy from the library. And I wanted to invite you all to come see the new library, it is amazing. And I wanted to thank the city guys very much, because they were so much help. And Shannon said the other thing was, we're looking towards the January grand opening, making plans for that. So, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Any questions for Betty concerning the library?
I probably couldn't answer, but I-
So, I do hope everyone's made a point to stop by, the library is open, but we've closed the old part of the library. Pulled the floor out, it's a disaster, but the new part of the library was really nice. And I have had several compliments, as Betty said, with the working of the different departments within the city, how well they work together, how pleasant they were. I guess some of the library patrons don't see some of the city employees on a day-to-day basis, and so they were very pleased with that. We got that report from the library board as well as some others, so, anyway. Stop in and see that. Next is the court report. We still do not have a chief clerk. We've discussed that twice. I do have an update on that. The individual who was looking at taking that position and sharing between West Fork and Greenland, has decided they're not interested in it at this point. And so, we are, we're back to square one. The judge is, I think he's gonna put out requests or applications for that position, and we'll see what comes of that. But for now, we're gonna continue, just like we always have for the last several months, we're having court in Greenland, and everything is going as well as we can with regard to that. Oh, yeah, the court report, yes. Everyone has one, okay. So, the court, as you can see, is still rocking along fine with all of the issues that they have being cramped in Greenland, being cramped into the police office. So, we're still moving along well there. Any questions concerning any of that? The building, there is construction starting to happen again. Obviously slow, they have the walls laid out on the floor. The dig team took so much time, is up finally. Christie's got a little bit more of a report on that, however, but. Does anyone else on the board? Police Department, Chief Nelson.
All right, we had three hundred and sixty-two calls for service, ninety-one citations. We made three arrests within our city, which is low for us, and whether it says other arrests, we made four arrests. What that stands for, I was a little confused during our department head meeting, what that is, is arrests that we made for other agencies. That would be other warrants and things like that, probable cause. I hadn't, I haven't given a big update lately on classes, but this last month, we did do a juvenile, juvenile health class. We all got certified in Namus, which is a state mandated now. Elena went ahead and took the Namus as far as the data entry and those things. And I'm sorry, I'm throwing acronyms, because I know not all of you policemen, but it's the National Missing and Unidentified Persons Data System, is what that is. So, we also took a legal updates class. We had some things I did want to mention, we did have a bomb threat at the school this past month. It was unubstantiated. We have taken a lot of time and effort to how we're gonna respond to those and how we're gonna look at those in the future. There were some things that I wasn't real pleased with, and some things that I think Collins thought that we could do differently. So, we're gonna continue to work on that, but I think we've got a lot better plan in place. And also, just for a heads up for you guys, our body cameras are closely coming to the end of their, their life. Not meaning their old, meaning Axon has bought out our body cameras. They gave us a quote, we asked them for a quote. What we did last time, we paid seven thousand dollars over, I thought it was three years, it may have been five, but it was seven thousand dollars over three years, is what I believe it was. Axon came back with a five-year contract at eighteen, almost nineteen thousand dollars. So, I have been looking anywhere but Axon for the near future. I'm gonna try and get those before the end of the year, so I may be trying to shuffle some of my line items, things like that. We've been looking at some, I think Wolfcom is one of the ones we've looked at, they're about ninety-three hundred dollars for five years, some things like that. So, if anybody else has some body cameras that they think work well. Do you know what the sheriff's office is using as far as body cameras?
I have no idea, we don't have them in our department.
And what do you guys use?
Axon.
Axon, yeah. We can't go Axon, but we're checking all the other, so that's something that'll be coming up in the future. You guys have any questions for me?
I can ask.
Okay.
Mr. Ferguson?
I don't know what. We are cleaning out our effluent pond right now. That started, we started our bypass on Thursday. Where we were bypassing that pond, they mixed and started hauling out of there on Saturday. And they're still hauling out. The rain did not help us any, we were just running the plant for about sixteen hours and then shutting it completely down. Now, we're running it twenty-four hours a day and trying to get pumped all the water that we can through there, so. So, we're, we're shorthanded and getting kind of tired. I got one in class this week in Fayetteville for a sewer class, and so I'm down to man two, so. We're gonna have our pre-con for our sewer line project Thursday, excited about that. I'm assuming they're wanting to start pretty quick. Our other, other big thing is, we did, did get a reasonable bid for our Robinson sidewalk project, so we're trying to get that off the ground as well. Adam is here this evening. We're gonna scrap the sidewalk on the one-seventy portion and just do the sidewalk down Robinson. We were still over budget quite a bit with the Highway one-seventy stuff, so. So, we're gonna scale it back and go ahead and try to get it done this year, so. Other than that, there's lots of tankers rolling through town, I don't know if y'all seen them.
Just a little bit of clarification, Isaac says that they're manning the plant. So, the plant works twenty-four hours anyway, whether we're down there or not. But with what they're doing with this clean out of that pond, they actually have a guy on, on site twenty-four hours a day. So, Johnny's in class studying for an operator's test, so it's just three of them twenty-four hours a day. It's fun. All right, any questions for Isaac? Before we close the conference?
I'm not, I'm not the one taking the brunt of it, it's the other two, so. No questions?
Thanks, Isaac. Or should I, Harrison?
So, we've got, we're well into our fall ball and our flag football programs, we're four weeks in with a couple of weeks left to go. And so far, things come really smoothly, and a lot of good feedback so far from the teams that are involved, so we hope to build on it in the future and get more teams involved. We wind up with, in our fall ball program, with ten teams, local area teams, not just West Fork, but Farnington, we've got one still in Westville. It's been, it's been good so far. Couple of projects that we're working on, trying to get accomplished before the end of the year. Mainly to go on this year's budget, is some additional parking lot at Carter. We're running at soccer field, it's basically being used as parking lot anyway, we're looking at some options there. It's probably gonna be a gravel park a lot, just because of the price of asphalt right now. We're gonna gravel it first and add some additional lighting to both parking lots down the shore, working on that, getting some quotes and stuff there. We're also looking at putting, I brought this up in the past, but a disc golf course that will be put on the land that's just north of Carter Park. I'm really excited about that project. I've got a gentleman involved that is from West Fork, and he owns a golf course out towards Hoggah. And he's actually helped develop several of the disc golf courses in Northwest Arkansas. I think it's something that's gonna really add a lot of value to our parks department in our town. It'll, it'll draw people in, they have big tournaments, it's really getting popular. There's, there's some schools that are even getting involved with it, organizing teams and stuff. So, at first, it was kind of just something, put a few baskets out there and let them go throw frisbees around, but there's a lot more to it, and I'm really excited about it. I think it's a great opportunity for the community. It can be a revenue source for Parks Department as well, host tournaments, or the police department, fire department, Boy Scouts, other things that might want to hold, host a tournament for fundraising purposes and stuff too. So, there's just a lot of opportunity there, I think it's gonna be a great addition. We hope to get that at least financially done by the end of the year, and it may take, maybe in the spring before we actually get it all, all done, and open up to the public. We're also still researching ideas for our dog park as well. Long-term project that we're, we're starting to put a little more thought and research into is the splash pad as well. That's financially something that's probably gonna be down the road, and maybe it'll probably take some grant money and some other things, just for the budget purposes. We are still down a committee member, we're taking applications for that, and hope to have some applicants by our next meeting, which is the twenty-second. So, possibly next month, we'll bring in a recommendation for a new committee member for our parks committee. The Boy Scout project that I mentioned last month was being completed. If y'all got a chance to walk down there and notice, but they did. His Eagle Scout project, they did a lot of repairs to the big pavilion. They did a little bit of lumber repair in there, but mostly more electrical, did some new security lighting and updated some of the plugs and stuff. And then on the little pavilions, replaced some rotten lumber and stuff like that. It's, it looks really good. They did, he did a really well job, good job organizing that, and turned out nice. We'll have to let that wood cure a little bit and get some stain on it, and it's, it'll look nice, so. And I think that's about it. We did, Isaac and I went down and uncovered it all, y'all be happy to know we went down and buried our Christmas lights so we could get to them and get them worked on and get, get ready to start hanging those up. Month, six weeks, it won't be long, it'll be here four years.
Did that Merry Christmas from Bluff yet?
Isaac's working on that. That side's his. That side of Bluff is Isaac's, so he's working on that.
With a spotlight.
But with all, that's been our storage building for all the things that come out of the library and the court's building and stuff, so. But we were a little worried that there might not be any Christmas lights this year, but we did go down and clear it out enough that we. Of course, some of that came out and went back to the library, and that helped as well, and so we should be good to go on Christmas lights here. I think that's all I have. Was that everything, Mayor?
I think so.
Okay.
Any questions for Chad?
We did have a park emergency as well, I'll bring that up.
Uh, next, Chief Myers.
John, don't shoot me, I'm just doing what I was told, okay? It wasn't my fault. Really, it was a pretty average month, call volume wise, sixty-two calls per month. Made it through another year, three years in a row, without any motorcycle incidents, three bikes missing, barter fee, which was fabulous in our area. Have done, had a couple of house fires last month, one of them was ours, one of them was in Nate, Boston Mountain, which we actually have to go do another one today. So, been a little, little busy already for that. October's fire prevention month, so we set up smoke traders at the school, which the sheriff's office actually puts it on, we go and help them. So, we did today, yesterday's day at West Fork, tomorrow, big Greenland, and then we'll have daycares doing some of those. Took part in the Renaissance Fair the school put on, which, best I can tell, it was a mini-job fair. EMS-based, kind of us, police department, central EMS, sheriff's office, army, I think, at a tent, so kind of a good deal, for about an hour or so. We are gonna do trunk or treat again this year. I figured it would be the twenty-eighth is when they have the Fall Carnival, but I've been, we're actually gonna do it on the thirty-first, Halloween. Still gonna have the Fall Carnival on the twenty-eighth, the school is, but for whatever reason, they want to do trunk or treat on the thirty-first. So, that's kind of what we're planning around now. Only other thing I've got is, is kind of the approach kind of was, it's, it's for loss, don't worry about it. Wanted to get everybody's opinion on maybe possibly looking at dedicating this building to Mitch before it turns into some type of a memorial type of deal. Not looking to put big signs on the building, anything like that, just looking at maybe of a formal dedication of the building, you know, in his name. I sure don't plan on ever trying to surpass anything he's done in this town, but can't imagine anyone else ever being able to step up to that, but. Just an idea, you know, to kind of get everybody's opinion, something more to do for the family than anything else. Other than that's all I've got. So, y'all just think about it, and I'll send it outside tonight, whatever. Something to think about, see what we're in on.
Any thoughts?
Like I said, maybe just put a plaque up inside the building or something, you know, say that, put a big name on the outside. Officially, it would be a name change of the building, but not a, we're gonna letterhead or anything.
In the past, in this maybe twelve years ago or something, we actually at that time, instead of the council pond decided we had a memorial top. Anything that was wanting building names and things like that, whether it was a platform or whatever, we actually come up with a group of people. Then each council member picked somebody from the community. But we had that a long time ago, so I don't know if that's something you want to rethink about. And it was during, when the library new part was this big deal, when Bertha Blackman, that's when we kind of all came together and said, hey, let's have this committee. And each council member had, you know, appointed someone or whatever, and it was the community wanted, and, you know, kind of like longstanding community members was kind of the thought behind that. But, I don't know. But, I don't know, I should bring that up because that's what we did in the past. And then when Henry Griffith, when it came wanting a recycle center to be named after him, then it came up again. So I know a lot of buildings are involved, you know, and that's what, and then another time. He was on the Parks Committee for a long time, like the chairman. John South, that whole issue came up again, so there's been three big things. And so it's kinda like we were putting it to a committee so that...
And I think that's fair enough, I don't wanna do that personally. I don't like putting names on buildings. I mean, I just, I don't like that, you know, what the chief's talking about, if we wanna dedicate the building, do a plaque. I'm fine with that, but I don't wanna do a big name on a building somewhere.
Right, like the new addition, such and such addition. Or like if they wanted like the entire park to be named after him, and then it was the entire addition, and then it was the entire recycle center, it was those three that. You know? I was just bringing up, you're gonna have a lot of family and a lot of public just gonna go nuts. So I'm just bringing up what's happened in the past.
So Isaac, you named the sewer intercepter yet?
I don't wanna name that for me, if that's what you were going on that road.
Well, basically I wanna put a committee together with that, if you guys wanna think of somebody.
So if we want to, if we wanna think about this, come up with some ideas, we can have input that to old business for next meeting? So put some thought into that, how we wanna handle that for next meeting, we'll get the answer and move forward.
Who we wanna discuss and let's get that done?
I'd like some old business myself.
Okay. Is that all right? Thank you, Chief.
That's it?
Any other questions for the chief?
No, I mean, that would give community time today.
That's right.
We're done, can sit down.
All right. Treasure report, a little extra?
So the budgets look really good. Overall, we've increased our bank balances a little over 156,000 so far this year. All the departments are in the positive for their budgets. I expect those numbers to change quite a bit, 'cause a lot of them like to wait till December to spend all their money. But I still expect them to be within budget by the end of the year, so. I don't think the 210,000 under budget is realistic for the end of the year, but I think we'll come out fine for the end of the year. Sales tax compared to this time last year, and the city sales tax, we're still down a little over 4%, but we're up in the county. So the two of them together, we're down about 2% overall. Is there any questions on the budgets before we move on to buildings?
Is there any reason why you think that that might be due?
What?
The city sales tax?
No, I don't know. No. There's not, you can't get a report to say who, you can't, the report shows what type of taxes paid, so if it's a grocery tax or if it's whatever. It shows what type of tax, but it doesn't show specifically like this business went out or it's taken in less income or it doesn't show that type of thing, so. No, I don't have a good answer for that.
Any questions?
Okay, so buildings. We'll start with the courts building, actually let's start the library, 'cause it's on top. They...
So this is on a separate sheet, 'cause she gave me separate one of that?
They have gone in and they tore out the old floor, it is worse than we hoped. It's, basically the entire floor's gonna have to be replaced. There is a seal, and Joe can probably explain all this better than I can, but what the exterior wall actually sits on, that seal is completely rotted as far as they can tell at this point. The whole floor has not been pulled out yet, but they're, they're pretty sure that it's rotted. So we have projected change orders on this sheet, which the number looks pretty scary at 75,000. But if you look at the original contract amounts, change orders that we've done so far, where are we at? Overall, we're looking at being over budget, just a little over $1,000. So as bad as the 75,000 looks, it's really not that bad.
We're paying for a lot.
Overall, yes. The library has more than made that amount up in the interest that is earned on the bond money. We have money setback in capital outlay, so we still have money left for stuff like the circulation desk that we're paying for separately. Any other projected changes and, you know, furnishings and stuff if we do that, so. The floor's worse than we thought, but overall the budget can handle it, so. Any questions on the library? Joe, do you wanna add anything as far as structurally?
Well, it's fairly straightforward. If I stop later today, just to begin, and I think you've probably seen the last couple of days, they've got maybe 30%, 40% of the floor up. And we're scanning in the floor joists over on the eastern end. I didn't realize they'd been able, you still can't see most of the rim joints around the envelope wall. But I'm sure what they've probed is like the rest of the stuff, it just needs to do floor structure. Did the project manager give you any kind of allowance number? I've noticed structure framing, there wasn't anything there that...
So his, on the bottom of this, it says the floor, the floor repair allowance, that 34,000. That's got a lot, quite a bit of stuff bundled in there together.
But you actually looked at it, you did look at it?
Yes, yes, and I...
That's what I couldn't tell.
I wanna say around 15, but I'm not gonna, I'm not for sure on that. But that, that number as well as some extra demo and all that is in that 34,000.
It's fairly straightforward, it just needs to do, and there, in addition to the floor raining, there's a water problem underneath, there's standing water underneath the building. So we met, we suggested some stone and a new vapor barrier, surround joists to replace, do some new vapor barrier down, just like you do under your house or any other building with a water problem, that way you'll never, you'll never talk about this again.
And that's part of the problem, I think, is that that building started out as a house. Water off the rock. Was turned into something else and it was never built or designed.
So there's standing water, and that's what caused the problem. It's easily fixable, it's good, there's contingency here.
Just Mike?
Okay, so the court project's basically the same, we're overall, we're looking at being about $1,700 over budget. Once again, we've got money because of the interest and money in capital outlay, we've got money to cover that, so I'm not very concerned about that. Just to point out, one of those numbers is very large for pools HVAC. We were not expecting to have to replace air conditioning units. We should've been expecting to have to do that, 'cause the two that we had were 25 years old. So I think the ones that we have were operating, but if we're in the process of doing this, then we have the money to go ahead and get those updated now. There were, do you remember Isaac, what they said, condenser fans, I don't, I don't know. There was something wrong with at least one of them that we knew we were gonna have to fix, so we just went ahead and got an estimate to replace both of them. So that includes the two units plus all of the dug work and everything that we thought we were gonna get to keep the old stuff. But because of demo, we didn't, because of the beam and all that, we didn't get to, so that's a large portion of that change. Any questions off court? They are, evidently they've got walls there, they're supposed to be lifting those tomorrow to actually start some of the framing. They're trying to get the main corridor done first so they can do, put in the grid ceiling, the grid for the ceiling. We sent them today some updated information on some electrical and data outlets that we needed in there. But by Friday, I think we should see significant framing in there.
Any questions off court?
The last one is the community center. And basically, I didn't give you all the contracts on that, I just wanted to kinda update you on where we were with the money, 'cause it's basically done. There are a few payments that I know that are for sure outstanding, there's a few contracts that we haven't paid the full amount on. So at this point, I'm trying to get Baldwin and Michelle to tell me if we just came in under budget on a few things or if we still have that stuff outstanding. But best case scenario, if all that's outstanding, we're still looking at having 28,000 in that bond fund. We have got items in, that we have paid for out of the general fund, architect, summer finger repairs and stuff like that, that we will be able to have ourselves reimbursed for to finish using that money. So that one came in under budget and got some money left over. Any questions? Can I get you to do a motion and a vote to allow me to move forward with? We will, we will have specific change orders when the time comes, but I would just like the council's blessing to know that we're gonna move forward with these changes.
So can we get a motion to say that the council recognizes that there are changes in the works that will need to be done on these two buildings?
Motion second? Okay, motion second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Stay there, Kristi.
So next, item of new business, item one, is approve our 2020 tax levy of five mills for the general fund. We do this every year. This is so that we get the, the county is gonna collect those five mills, this is so that they remit it to us. Who was it that did not pass this?
Case ring.
Case ring, yeah. Typically. They did not pass this and lost out on a lot of money.
They tried to sneak it in by changing the date on the last one, but that didn't work out.
There, I don't know if you knew this, but there was a feed on Facebook, there were some people concerned that we were trying to pass a new tax. This is not new.
Did not hear that.
This, five mills has been in place to the general fund for as long as I've been doing this job. And it is just a...
Just the amount that you collect.
Paper trail for the county that we've approved it to get it, so it is, it's not new, nothing's gonna increase because of it.
Good point, and it's not even our tax, this is a county tax that they remit to us. Yeah, anyone else question about that? Let them know. I'll second.
We have a motion second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? That motion carries. Kristi, would you like to introduce item two?
The department heads have been working on their budgets. It's gone extremely well and we are ready for a budget workshop, so tentatively, if it works for everybody, we would like to set that for Tuesday, October 29th at 6:30 here.
No work. Do we have a motion to approve that? Motion second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And those opposed, no? And that is open to the public?
Absolutely.
So, Kimmy, did you hear that? I know you had a question about that, that budget workshop?
Yes.
It is open to the public, so yes.
What was the date?
October 29th.
6:30.
Yes.
Item three, approve change orders for library, court, police, extension of contract completion date. At 64 days until substantial completion of November 30th. That's on the library and then, pure excavating, $3,000 regrade soils to building, spread stone and parking. And there's another change order for replacing ceiling tiles in the middle portion of the library. Zap general, 1,800 to remove the 51-foot wall and 250-foot drywall and exterior walls. So they asked for 64 days before substantial completion, so we are getting close. That's putting this at the end of November for substantial completion on the library. Courts is the same.
That is for both of them. I now expect the library to go a little bit longer than that with the floors.
I don't remember what the regrading the soil to the building was at the library. I know the ceiling tiles, we were gonna try to keep the ceiling tiles, they just looked dingy when you put the bright light open this. So if you guys haven't been in the library, that middle section, they put some more windows in it, opened it up, so it's got a ton of natural light coming into it and plus the lights, it's bright in there, so.
I think about half of those ceiling tiles they had planned on replacing and half, they were gonna leave the old ones that were, they thought were in good shape, but when you put the new ones up against it, they looked really bad, so that's why they did that. The grading had to do with putting extra gravel down in the parking lot. I think we bought the gravel separately, if I remember, and then Greer just...
He backed over next to the buildings.
And then the court building, they removed a 51-foot wall, a drywall, that was, it was...
They were trying to...
Firewall?
You're right, they were trying to leave some of the old walls that were originally around the courtroom. But it was not gonna match up in thickness with the new walls, and it had something to do with firewall. But it wasn't gonna match up in thickness, so they ended up taking those two walls down. And then the, the drywall that they removed was on the east side of the building, back where the water office is, the mild office used to be, there was some water damage to that drywall. So they went ahead and removed it and removed the insulation that was behind that, 'cause it had a little bit of mold on it, so.
Any questions concerning the change orders? Any other questions concerning the change orders?
You do.
Motion to approve the change orders? We have a motion second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? That motion carries. Item four, approve 565 items to be withdrawn from the library and the tour. Do we have a motion or any discussion concerning that?
I'll make the motion second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? That motion carries. I can't talk enough about how, how much work they've done down there with the shelving, it's all one color now. It is nice, they, Betty can tell you, they, they had volunteers scrubbing every book, every DVD that came in from storage. I mean, that whole place has been cleaned and I think Shannon has de-spidered it too. All right, item number five is actually, we have a resolution for that, for the Robinson street sidewalk. Isaac has reviewed the bids, and we would like to approve boulder construction for that contract. So for item five, we have resolution number 201909. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of West Fork to award a bid from and entering to an agreement with boulder construction for West Fork's safe routes connection. an agreement with boulder construction for West Fork Safe Routes Connection. Is there any questions concerning that? As Isaac stated earlier, we are going to take off the Highway one-seventy portion of that just because it was throwing us way over budget on that, so. No questions? We make a motion to approve? Motion second? Motion second, all those in favor say yes? Yes. Those opposed, no. So that resolution, two thousand nineteen zero nine, has passed. Item six, do what?
Item six, Austin.
Oh, yes, it did, yes. So item six was to authorize the mayor to negotiate that contract for taking Highway seventy-one out of it, but that was in the title of the town's resolution. All right. So that concludes all of our new business tonight. Next, the mayor's comments. We have a fall cleanup coming October eleventh from nine AM to three PM, and on October twelfth, eight AM to the, to noon. I have been asked why we reduced the times to that. Most of the reason we've reduced the times is just because of attendance. So after those times, so you guys have been standing around, no one's coming. Not enough to warrant stand, you know, staying open for longer periods, and so it could put, you know, it's just going to make it hard for me to get there, and I know it'll make it hard for some others to get there, but all in all, we're saving some, some overtime for both us and for him, providing the floor is down there, so. The reason why the times are reduced is just because of attendance during those times. Also wanted to just let everyone know that the city has been contacted again on the property for the co-op. Nothing is in the works yet, but the co-op is still interested in that property and doing something there. They've made some changes, and so hopefully in the near future, we'll hear more about that. Same property? Same property, yes. Just different design, I think, so we will keep you updated on that as we find out more.
So did all of them come in on campus still, or is it...
So we don't know. Our understanding was that they were spending, they were quite a bit over budget on that, and so they kind of regrouped and wanted to reevaluate and see, see if they can do something different. But I was just excited to hear that it is not a dead project, it is, there's still some interest there. I think they were actually looking at buying some other property in West Fork. I'm not sure if that fell apart, if it was, if it went through, but still pretty exciting that they are interested in West Fork. Any other questions concerning, anyone sitting? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion second, all those in favor say yes? Those opposed, no. Motion carries.